I call the March 25th, 2019, City Council Committee, the whole meeting to order the curricul- call to roll.
Borowitz.
Here.
Alderman Brooks will be absent. Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Under public comment, we have no one registered this evening. There is no public forum in forum, so under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, Chief Woody has a couple of items that he would like to share with us. Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council that the department is working on. First would be a camera grant. Belvidere Police Department submitted an application for a grant through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board. ILETSB is open, the application process for a new camera grant, which allows police departments to apply for grants for new and previously purchased within the last year. Squad car cameras. Our department submitted for this same grant last year, and we were awarded $20,000 for three brand-new cameras, and reimbursed for one camera that was previously purchased. This year, we're applying for 15 brand-new HD cameras, four cameras for the new squad cars, and 11 to retrofit the remaining fleet that currently have digital squad car cameras with newer HD technology. The total amount applied for is $86,280. The grant's not a matching grant, and once awarded, I'll bring that amount before the council for review.
Anything else?
And then, just one other thing. Over the past several months, I've been in talks with police chiefs from Cherry Valley as well as Loves Park. Both have jurisdiction within Boone County, and both have expressed interest to provide the Metro SWAT team with one to two people. So it would be more of a regional SWAT team as opposed to a metro. Chief Swank from Cherry Valley has gotten approval from his mayor and the city council for him to go ahead and put the expenditure for training equipment within this year's fiscal budget. Chief Lind is still working with the mayor to work out some of the details. Both departments, as I stated, have jurisdiction within Boone County, and if there is a critical incident, like an active shooter, hostage, or barricaded situation, chances are, our SWAT team would be involved. And, you know, for them to provide our team with personnel, it just seems to make sense to me. It doesn't cost the city or the county any additional funds. It allows them to have their personnel that's specially trained, and go back to their department and train their people as well. So when it was- when the option was presented to us, it just seemed like something that deemed worthy of serious consideration. So, thank you.
Okay, sure. In your packets, and I just want to read this into the record, is the 2019 branch pickup. We'll start on, let me see, we start on the north side of town? Okay. It shows a week-by-week on the map.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, so, all right. Under Public Safety, New Business, we have a police item, the replacement of squad number 21. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the memo in your packets states, on January 18th of this year, squad number 21, a 2013 Dodge Charger, was taken to Jerebutida's for a complaint of the check engine light being on. Upon inspection, it was determined that were- that there were two large fluid leaks. The oil filter housing and the intake manifold were both cracked. The transmission cooler was leaking. There were oil pump issues, and the catalytic converter needed to be replaced. The approximate value of the costs were $3,500 to $5,000. It is the recommendation of the police chief to not repair this vehicle, as repair costs exceed the current value of the squad. Vehicles should be parked, sold at public auction, or through the eBay auction process as currently allowed, with the funds obtained from the auction going back to the general fund. There is a state-of-Illinois mandated law whereby all first-time offenders who are convicted of DUI must pay $750 to the DUI Equipment Fund, 350 of which is sent back to the police department. Additionally, for a second and subsequent offense, the defendant must pay $1,000 to this fund, two of- $200 of which is sent back to the police department. The current balance in the fund is $151,906.2. A replacement vehicle has been located through the Jack Wolf Dodge dealership in Belvidere. Cost of purchasing the vehicle and purchasing the necessary equipment is $43,500. Belvidere Police Department would recommend using the DUI Equipment Fund as a source to pay for a replacement squad car at a cost not to exceed $43,500. Motion to replace squad 21 with a 2019 Dodge Charger all-wheel drive at a cost not to exceed $43,500 using the money from the DUI Equipment Fund.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Alderman Crawford. Second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion down on the floor. Alderman Freeman, and Alderman Snow.
I actually had some questions for Becky, but I was hoping she was going to be here tonight. So in our budget, we have fines for DUI equipment. I'm assuming that's what this Public Act 096-1342 is about. We did 106 DUIs last year at, you know, the low rate of $200 each is $21,000. We have budgeted in here like $24,000, so that means that some of those are first-time offenders at $350. But in our police department budget for vehicles, we have $0 budgeted. The way I read the statute is, any money received by law enforcement agency under this section- subsection F shall be used to purchase law enforcement equipment that will assist in the prevention of alcohol-related criminal violence throughout the state. This shall include, but not limited to, in-car video cameras, radar and laser speed detectors, and alcohol breath testers. I'm not sure, I guess Dorella could tell us if we could actually use it on a squad car, but, you know, even getting 20- this enacted in 2011, so even at $20,000 a year, we've just been banking this money for six, seven years? Like where is that, is that just in like a police, um, fund that we just don't tap? Or what? Where's that money?
The answer to the question on whether you can use it to buy a car, yes you can. The question on to whether it's been used in the past, yes it has. It's in the general fund, but it's in a separate account line item. So it's accounted for separately for accounting purposes. And they have used it from time to time, yes.
It's like I went through the budget, and I couldn't find it anywhere. But maybe Becky can help me out with that.
Well, a few years ago, you might remember, we bought a box truck to use as a portable lab and SWAT team vehicle. That was bought out of this fund. Typically, we budget for four squad cars to replace the aging fleet on an ongoing basis. When we have special purposes- purchases, like we went to Durango's for our officers a few years ago, this is a fund that can be used for those purposes too, so.
Any other questions? Alderman Sam- Snow, and then Alderman Sanderson.
So just to clarify, and I think Marsha might have, when she was giving her comment. So for the first offense of the 750 fine, we get 350. And then for the $1,000 fine, we only get 200. And any idea where the rest of the money's going? We're not getting more of a cut.
Goes to the state. Yeah, it's divided up between the police department, municipality, and the state.
Alderman Sanderson.
Yes, I'm all in favor of getting a squad car. I just noticed though that our squad cars were changing the way they look, and I really liked the old look. It looked positive, it was white, looks like someone coming to rescue you, and now we got the darker color coming up. Is that what you're changing all the squad cars to? Is it black and white, or what's going on with that?
Yeah, that's the look that we're going to be going with going forward. Yes, that's correct.
Did we vote on that?
We do not need to vote on that. That's a police department decision what color the squad cars are.
Aren't we paying for how it's decalled and what color it is?
We pay for that on every squad car. They come white with no- nothing on them. So we do the paint, and the decals, and the equipment that go on the car. It comes to us a blank, and we do it according to what the police department has decided they want for the squad cars.
Well, I'm just throwing off what I think they should look like. I thought they looked really positive before, looked really nice, and, you know, it's not going to stop me from voting for this or anything, I'm just saying that, I don't know, I think it is something that should be brought to council for our consideration, but, you know, it's a matter, maybe it's a merit of pity, maybe it's not. But I think, you know, since we pay for it, we should have that brought to us just for our approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Freeman?
Yeah, I had another, I guess, question, comment. I don't know what you want to call it. So I, when I asked, I was told that officers do not take squads home at all. But like I see them over on, way over in Rockford on Alpine. I've seen them in Target parking lot. I see, there was one that used to live at the, around the corner from me, at the end of the block, and that squad was in his driveway all the time. So if they're not taking them home, I don't think, I mean, I don't know, we're replacing a squad car that might maybe be sitting in somebody's driveway.
No, and I'm not sure who told you that none of the squad cars get taken home, because some of them do. Our supervisors take their squad cars home, as well as our investigations, they take their cars home. And for those officers that live in town, if they're working like a long weekend, they're going to be the only one driving that squad, so yeah, they may park it in their driveway overnight. But as far as maintenance and that goes, if you talk with any of the administration from the county, squad cars that are taken home generally are probably taken better care of and actually have better maintenance records.
Just no questions or comments? There are not all those in favor of the motion, as I can probably say. Aye?
Aye.
No opposed? No. Motion passed unanimously. We have nothing under Finance and Personnel, Unfinished or New Business. Under number five, we have Courtney and Robin Skelton of 815 East Fourth Street to come and talk about their sewer backup. If you guys would like to come on up. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name, my name is Carrie Hallie. This is Robin and Courtney Skelton, and they've prepared this statement and asked me to read it. I'm just a friend of the family, but they're emotional about their situation, and asked me to read this with potentially a calmer voice. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. All right. As I said, this is Robin and her husband Courtney Skelton. They've lived in Belvidere for 17 years in a three-bedroom, 1,500-square-foot ranch at 815 East Fourth Street. They'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share their troubling story today. On Saturday, February 23rd, at about 10:00 a.m., they noticed sewer water backing up in their fully-finished basement, coming in through the shower and the toilet. The raw black sewage was gushing out of the drains like a waterfall, and there was two to three inches of sewage water on the approximately 750-square-foot basement floor. All of their possessions were standing in or floating in the water. They did not have any indication that this was happening. You can only imagine their surprise when they just stumbled upon the situation when Courtney went downstairs to get something out of the basement. According to ecuweather.com, the weather on February 23rd and the two days immediately prior were clear and dry. The temperature on Thursday was 31 degrees, and on Friday was 37 degrees, with zero inches of precipitation and zero inches of snow. The weather on Saturday was similar. They immediately placed an emergency call to Pearson Plumbing and Heating, who installed their HVAC system to their satisfaction, and they trusted their professionalism and workmanship. Pearson Plumbing arrived at about 11 o'clock, and after a thorough inspection of the basement, their sewer line and the city sewer line, Pearson Plumbing concluded that the root cause of the flooding was from the city sewer line. Pearson Plumbing then called Belvidere City Public Works Department on the Skelton's behalf, and they immediately dispatched a repair crew and fixed the city sewer line approximately two hours later. Keith from the Public Works Department informed the Skeltons that there was a break in the city sewer line, that he fixed it, and asked, asked the Skeltons to verify that the water was receding in their basement. They confirmed that the water was indeed receding in the basement after he fixed the city sewer line. Keith apologized on behalf of the city of Belvidere, and advised the Skeltons to contact the city to get reimbursed for the flooding damages and repairs. In the flood, the Skeltons lost the flooring, the drywall, the trim, the fully-finished bathroom, including shower and vanity, two leather couches, two cube storage units, an outdoor fountain, and some exercise equipment and other personal items. Because it was a Saturday, the city offices were closed. They left a voicemail for Mayor Mike Chamberlain and the City Public Works Department, and asked them to return their calls on Monday to discuss the reimbursement for the flooding damages and repairs. Also that day, the Skeltons called Servpro out of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, which was the closest location for an emergency Saturday cleanup. Servpro arrived at about 6:00 p.m. that day. They inspected the damage, immediately set about removing the flooring and drywall, extracted the water, set up dryers and dehumidifiers, and cleaned and sanitized. The dryers and dehumidifiers were in the basement for three full days. On Monday, nobody returned the voice messages left over the weekend, so Robin called the Public Works Director Brent Anderson. Brent told Robin to contact Shawna Arco, city clerk, to file the appropriate paperwork. Shawna advised Robin to first get a turn-down from the Skelton's homeowner insurance policy, which they did, and then to file a claim with the city's insurance company, CCMSI, which Robin did. CCMSI denied any liability. Shawna then advised the Skeltons to file this petition at the next city council meeting, and so here they are today. The Skeltons received a bill from Pearson Plumbing for the $60 service call, and a bill from Servpro for $5,800. They got a remodel estimate from New Leaf Remodeling for $18,000, which includes replacing the flooring, the drywall, the trim, the shower, and the vanity. This estimate does not include painting or replacement of furniture or any other personal items. The Skeltons are innocent victims of a broken city sewer line that has caused them extreme grief and expense. They are asking the city of Belvidere to reimburse them for $25,000 to cover the plumbing bill, the remediation bill, and the basic level remodeling. They are not asking for money to cover the furniture, exercise equipment, or any of their personal belongings. They would just like to be made whole from a structural damage perspective. They feel that that is only fair. Thank you.
As far as the follow-up, there wasn't actually a break in the line. As you see the pictures, I think everybody got in their packets. If you turn to the second page in the back, the Cameras, Ares Industries, what we found was, the line was, there's a blockage in the main line, which was the result of accumulation of shop towels or disposable wipes. We did find a piece of concrete underneath those wipes, which is what the main cause was. It was heavy enough and big enough that it was catching the paper products over time, which caused the backup. So as soon as we were notified of the backup from Pearson, we were out, and we were able to jet the line, remove that blockage, and the sewer backup receded.
City Attorney?
As is usual, my advice in these kind of cases remains the same. This comes before the council every once in a while. First of all, the Tort Immunity Act generally makes the city completely immune from these kinds of claims. That is not always the case, but is usually the case. It depends on what the city has a system of maintaining and inspecting its sewers, which of course we do. It depends on when the city first becomes aware of an issue, which in this case, the first time we heard of it was this instance. The city procures insurance, no different than you or I going and buying car insurance for our vehicles. We have insurance for these purposes. If there's an accident on our insurance policies, the other side would go to our insurance carrier and submit a claim. If the insurance carrier refuses to pay the claim, and their own insurance doesn't take care of it, they always of course have the option of filing a lawsuit to see where it goes. But if the city pays the claim, it basically waives its insurance coverage for this claim and cannot seek reimbursement from its insurance carrier. Obviously, if they convince the insurance carrier that the claim should be paid, the insurance company may pay it, in which case it comes out of what we've already paid them, our premiums. If a lawsuit were filed and they prevailed, the insurance company would then be on the hook for that liability and those damages, and would pay that. That has happened in the past, and it happens every once in a while. But if the city spends the taxpayer dollars to pay this claim, once it's already paid the insurance company, the premiums, you're essentially paying your claims twice. So really, at this point, I have to recommend the council not to pay this claim.
Alderman Freeman?
So you all know how I feel about paying these claims, AKA the Larson's. My question is, we pay big bucks for an insurance, upwards of $400,000 a year. How many claims have actually been submitted, and out of those claims, how many have been paid? Because since I've been here, every single one has been denied. So I'm telling you, liability, if I hit somebody and I say, "Oh, I didn't know that my brake line was leaking," I'm still liable to damage to that other person's car and expect my insurance to pay for it. If they don't, I'm getting a new company. So maybe it's time we shop around for a new insurance company.
No insurance company would treat it any differently, because every insurance company will take advantage of any of the legal protections that are available to us, the city as, as the city. The Tort Immunity Act, nine times out of 10 is going to immunize the city from these kind of damages.
Maybe we should have a line item within our budget that covers a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for instances like this, because, I'm sorry, if the city sewer system causes damage to somebody's property, that's the city's responsibility all day long.
And that's what Keith told us, the two guys that came out, he told us that. "We're very sorry this happened. Go to the city, I'm sure they'll help you out." And that's why I'm here. I've gone through everything I'm supposed to do, taken off work, lost time from work.
The-
And now I come here, get all this stuff together and that, and now you're saying your insurance company won't pay. Why do you pay premiums for them to turn you down? They're just making money off of you then.
The insurance company is paid not just to pay claims, because obviously, they can't pay every claim that's ever submitted. Because some claims, not yours, but some claims are fictitious. Some claims just we're not liable for. We pay them in part, one, to pay the claims that are appropriately paid, but two, to do the legal analysis on every single claim that comes in, to see whether or not the city is legally responsible for the amount owed. And they looked at this case, and they made the determination that the city is not legally responsible for the amount that the, that's being claimed. And if somebody doesn't like that answer, no different than if we had said no, they of course have legal recourse. But what I am telling the council is, if the council chooses to simply pay a claim, you no longer have the protection of your insurance company, because you have essentially waived coverage on your policies. That is the same in any single insurance policy I've ever seen, whether it's automotive, personal injury, corporate, or in this case, government coverage through CCMSI and IMLRMA. So that's got to be my legal advice. As far as setting up a fund to pay these kinds of claims, certainly that's a policy call for the city council, but quite frankly, my advice to you would be the same, because I don't see here where the city is legally responsible for the damages claimed. We have a responsibility for our mains and sewers, but when the Tort, when sovereign immunity existed, that was advocated by the Illinois General Assembly in the Constitution of 1970, they created the, actually, before that, they created the Tort Immunity Act. The purpose of it is to realize, cities provide all kinds of services, water, sewer, police protection, fire protection. You can't, and things are going to go bad. And cities cannot be responsible for every single claim, or else we won't be able to fund all the other departments we have to fund. So they created the Tort Immunity Act that said, the city's going to be responsible when, not for just mere negligence. It's going to be responsible for claims that are willful and wanton, claims where we should have done something better, but we didn't know about it, or that we knew about, we didn't, to, we made a choice not to fix something. In some cases, not all cases. So in this case, we have a system of inspecting our sewers. We have a system of going out and cleaning them when we find obstructions, and this obstruction is the first time we ever heard of it. So I can see where the insurance company would make the decision to deny the claim. Frankly, if it came before me, I'd probably make the same recommendation.
Brent, do you have any?
I get, you know, we may not be legally on the hook, but I believe that morally, we have a responsibility to our taxpayers.
Alderman Porter?
Well, I'm just curious if we know where these shop rags came from, because that looks like it's a pretty major obstruction. It would seem like whoever's throwing shop rags in the sewer system would be the responsible party.
I was told you're never going to find that out. I didn't put them down. Now, my neighbor next door had six inches of water. We tried to get with him to come with us, but we never could contact him. All I know is I'm out. My whole refinished basement that was done maybe three or four years ago through no fault of my own. And I came here of good faith, and it seems like you already had a precedent in place for this. So why am I wasting my time? I feel like I'm wasting my time.
Brent, did you have another comment?
Well, as far as in relationship to where the shop rags came from, yeah, you're not going to know where that's at. I mean, it's, it depends on whatever flushes down the toilet, how they get in the system. Same for the check on concrete that we found on the pipe. It probably came from a manhole, it could have came from a section of pipe. How it got there, who knows? Things deteriorate over time, and they, they do show up. But you're never going to know for sure where it came from, or how long it's been there.
You want to say something?
I needed some clarification, if you would.
Sure.
Did your homeowner's insurance deny the claim, or?
Yes. We went through them first.
Did they specify why they denied the claim?
Any kind of water backup from the city is not their responsibility, is what they told us. She told me it's, you'd have to go to the city to get that back.
I went through something similar in 2001, when we had one of our big storms, and I did not have a sump pump backup on my insurance policy, which was like $125 a year. I didn't know there was such a thing. And it took out my basement, same thing, and it's-
Well, we have sump pumps.
Well, I had a sump pump, but the power was off for 12 hours, and the backup ran out of juice, and the sump pumps backed up.
Well, that's what happened to the guy next door. He, I don't know if his basement was finished, and I'm not speaking for him.
And sometimes when we have weather events, and we have freeze and thaw like this, or we have rain on top of freeze like this, we had a lot of people that had water.
Right, but this wasn't rainwater, this was sewage. Right, but this wasn't rainwater, this was sewage.
Well, and if the sanitary sewer backs up.
Stinky sewage.
I feel awful for you. I looked at the pictures, it's terrible. That's why there is the Tort Immunity though, because we can't fix everybody's everything when something happens like that.
So how many claims have you had? Like the alderman said, how many claims have you had where somebody did all their work, did their due diligence, spent hours doing everything I was supposed to, and then all of a sudden, well, you know, the insurance is going to pay because they'll raise our rates or cancel us.
We've had a few over the years.
A few, a few when you're paying $400,000 for insurance?
I think you need to understand what that ensures us for.
Well, it's, with one general liability, insurance could cover us all, police department, fire department, public works, city admin, vehicles, property, any kind of tort. So it's all more than a one, it's not just sewer backup.
No, what were you going to say?
Well, just one point. So there was shop towels in the sewage, but it looks like the main point of the problem was the concrete. Now, that wasn't there overnight. Why wasn't the inspections done? Why didn't they catch that? It sounds like there was a deficit of inspection at that point, if I may say.
Well, typically, our standard operating procedure policy for sewer lines is we attempt to clean 10% of our system every year. So once every 10 years theoretically, we go through and flush out and clean the sewer lines. The section, the block section of sewer line that you were on was last cleaned in 2008.
So why did we see, well, my husband saw after this happened to us, my husband saw them out cleaning the sewer lines after this happened to us. That sounded kind, looked kind of ironic, sounded kind of ironic to me, didn't it you?
Well, it's standard, again, standard operating procedure when we do have a backup.
In our area, around our area where we live.
We have to do the sewer, we come back, do the sewer cleaning, do the televising to make sure the, see if we can determine any of the cause of the backup and the condition of the pipe and so forth. Believe me, we don't like backups any more than anybody else does. We like them, we don't want to have any backups ever. Unfortunately, it's the nature of the business and you are going to have backups. But in this case, as you can see from the pictures, the pipe is in good shape. It's not a root issue, it's nothing. I think you said you lived here for 17 years and you've never had a backup before?
Correct.
Correct. So, we certainly make, when we do our cleanings and through our annual maintenance programs that we do do, we have a log where we keep where we know there's problems with certain lines. Say there's root infiltration, and there's a lot of problems where we know that we have to go and we have to clean and maintain that line more often than once every 10 years, until we can schedule that line to get rehabbed or replaced. In this case, for this block, there's never been an issue.
Well, why did it take 11 years for you to come clean it out?
Well, again, we try, we attempt to do, I said 10% each year, so we're just about right on schedule with your line.
10% of the city a year?
Correct.
So, again, I feel like I've wasted my time coming here. I've done my due diligence, I spent all this time on it, and you already had your minds made up that you're not going to help us out with even any of it. I mean, we don't make a lot of money, we're hardworking taxpayers, and now our whole basement is lost. So you can't even help us out just with the ServPro bill?
Alderman Freeman?
Yeah, I agree. I don't believe that taxpayers should be on the hook for $6,000 to clean up a mess that was made by city equipment. I think $18,000 is pretty high for New Leaf reconstruction. I think you guys could get it done for a lot cheaper than that, but I don't think you should, definitely not be on the hook for the $6,000. And I think you should be reimbursed for, I don't know, maybe another $6,000 for repairs.
Okay.
I thought that estimate was high too, but I didn't have time to get another one before we got here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, my position is I agree with not to pay this because I don't think we should go against, like you said, the insurance company. It'd be double paying it, plus they do have an option of taking it to court.
Which is going to cost me legal fees and a lawyer fees that I don't have.
I would, I would have to think you'd have to sue for that part of it too.
You guys want to go through a lawsuit for this when you could help me out, like that alderman said? I don't, I don't understand. I don't understand.
We don't have the freedom to make that decision. That's why there is a Tort Immunity Act, that is why we have a process and a procedure. And Alderman Crawford's absolutely right. You should take this back to the, you should get an attorney that'll work on a contingency. If they win, they get part of the judgment. If they don't win, they don't get anything. And take it back and submit it to the insurance company.
Why should I do that? They're just, your attorney is just going to fight to have us not win? Come on, this is ridiculous. You have one alderman that said you should do the right thing out of all this aldermen's? I don't, I don't, I don't understand.
If we set a precedent by going against our insurance company, then anybody that walks into this chamber and says they have a claim against the city, we've set a precedent by paying someone against our advice from our insurance company.
But the insurance is not involved in it. It's coming out of your budget, that you're going to spend $45,000 for a new police car. I understand the city needs to protect people and that, but what about protecting the citizens that pay all their bills on time, pay the property taxes, pay everything? I love this city, and this is just putting a sour taste in my mouth.
I'm sorry for that.
So you're not going to pay one single dime?
Again, we have a moral obligation to the taxpayers of this city. I'd like to remind the council of that. And each case comes case by case. So, not everybody's going to come in here and say they have a major sewage backup, but other things may not qualify for reimbursement, but this does.
Additional questions or comments from the council? Alderman Porter?
Well, I still need to go back to the shop towel thing. I know Brent says there's no way to find out who put all these in here, but I still think whoever did is the responsible party, and that's, looks like that's mainly what caused the backup.
That's right, and you can't find out who, you're probably never going to have anybody fess up into doing that. I mean, I don't know how you would find that out.
Alderman Borowitz?
Brent, was there any way that the city could have prevented this with those shop rags being in the sewer? Any way that you would have known?
No, not any way that we would have known. Certainly, having the concrete in there is what the, basically the closet's what provided the snag, the hook, whatever you want to call it, for the paper products to accumulate over time. But we have no way of knowing when that's going to happen, when you have the miles of sewer line that we have in town. Like I said, that's why we have the 10% per year with our manpower and our equipment that we do have available to us. That's what we utilize to do. Keep in mind, with the system that we have, we do not have that many backups. We do not have that many backups that are on us, and that's why you see the claims here that come to the council, few and far between. We may have two or three or four a year that make it this far, that is caused from a sewer main line being backed up. But just because we own the infrastructure, we have no control of what goes down the sewer drain. We have no control of what people flush and put into the system. And I think that's the key thing to remember here is because we have that, we do not have that control, and that's probably why we qualify for the Tort Immunity liability protection because we do not have that control. Certainly, we own the infrastructure, just like we own every roadway, but because somebody crashes on our roadway doesn't make us liable every time there's a car crash. So you've got to keep that in your mind and perspective. I hate that these things have happened. I don't like having sewer backups. They're the number one thing that I dislike the most, but unfortunately, they come with the territory in having a sanitary sewer system.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay these people $12,000.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Additional questions or comments? Alderman, no.
And I feel for you at this point. Unfortunately, we as a city don't have total control over everything that goes into the sewer.
What about the concrete that was down there? No one put that down there. That's what caused the shop rags to stick.
You'd be surprised what some people do, but we've had other times, if I recall correctly, where diapers and everything else gets sent down the sewer and we don't know, you can't figure out who did that, and ultimately, we can't be ultimately responsible. It's an unfortunate occurrence and, lack of another thing, I, you know, just one of the reasons my wife and I, we don't have any plumbing downstairs. Sewer's got to get up as high as the first level toilet before it.
Well, that's nice for you. I'm glad that, I'm glad you do not have to have, worry about that problem.
But that is, that's a reality of having plumbing down in a basement. It is a, it's a thing. And unfortunately, unless you jump through a lot of hoops to create a whole system that would completely stop that, it's an unfortunate occurrence and like the mayor said, I would say you need to sue and see if you can get reimbursed in that direction. And I, I think it's sad that insurance companies, like the homeowners, once it's determined that the city isn't quote "at fault" per se, is that they don't chime in and pay their portion for damage like this.
Well, it's sad that your insurance company wouldn't step up and do the right thing and pay for it.
Well, I'm surprised your insurance company wouldn't pay your claim and sue our insurance company to recover the money.
No, they wouldn't do that, I asked them.
Well, you've got the same issue. We've got an insurance company that is determining that the claim is not a claim they'll pay, and so you brought it to us, which I appreciate that you did that, and our insurance company went through the same process that your insurance company went through and arrived at the conclusion that it was not a claim that we would pay.
Well, I don't know where I'm going to get $6,000 out of my pocket to pay ServPro that's breathing down my neck for this. So you have to have three people agree to this, or two, or nobody? What is it? Is it a majority?
Majority of the council.
But just so you know, this is out of committee. This has to go to council next week for a final.
Well, this is the council.
This is a committee meeting.
This is a committee meeting.
It has to be forward to next week's meeting for a final.
Well, aren't these the same people that will be at it?
Hopefully.
Yeah, so what chance do I have?
Well, we'll find out.
So I got to wait another week? Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alderman Porter?
I just had a question. If I'm not mistaken, I talked to my insurance company about this a while back, and you can get sewer backup insurance. It's a rider on your insurance, if I'm not mistaken, and it was very expensive, but it is possible to get it.
Yes, it is. It's like $1,500 a year, which I don't, I don't even have the $6,000 to pay. I didn't even know there was a rider existed for this.
I don't know who your insurance company is, but you maybe need to talk to a different one because my rider is $129 a year for sump pump backup.
I have a sump pump. He's talking about a city sewer backup, this guy was.
If your sump pump backs up and brings water into your sanitary connection, I have two sump pumps, one that does groundwater, that pumps out rainwater from the drain field, and one that pumps out gray water through the sewer. We also, something, if you decide that you want to move forward and hire an attorney...
I don't want to do that. This is ridiculous. I don't want to cause any more time off of work and that. I'm not getting paid for being off work now, all this time, all this stuff I put into it. I mean, the only morally person you have on this council is her, and she's our, I think she's our ward, and the other guy that said yes. What if one of you had this happen to you? You have $25,000 laying around to fix something? I know that estimate was high, but I can't even at least get the sewage bill repair paid, if nothing else?
There's a process we need to go through here. We have a motion and a second, and we've listened to additional questions and comments. We need to put it to a vote. It has to be a majority of the council to vote yes to pay you, and if that's the case, it will go before the city council for final disposition. If a majority of the council does not vote to move this ahead, then it will end tonight with no payment.
Okay, so I didn't, I guess I was misunderstood what the first and second motion was.
Okay, there is a motion.
Sorry, I don't understand any of that.
To pay, Alderman Freeman made a motion to pay $12,000 to you on your claim.
Okay.
Correct. There was a second. We've had discussion, and now, yes?
I would recommend, remind the council that because there is existing now dispute between the property owners and the city, simply voting to pay them $12,000 does not make the dispute go away. They still have a potential claim against the city because there is no release or settlement satisfaction agreement in place between us and the property owners.
Well, I will sign something.
Just letting you know that.
I would sign something if I could gladly get $12,000 out of the $25,000 I'm owed. Even, even just the ServPro bill, and I'll have to bite the bullet and leave my basement the way it is.
And even the existence of that agreement, if you do agree to pay this claim, you will not be reimbursed from your insurance company, and we'll waive any defenses we have through the insurance company for the claim.
So you think I'm going to sue you after if you pay me? No, I'm not going to do that, and I like that. I don't, I don't understand. Just go ahead and put it to your vote, please, I'm sorry.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Sanderson?
A question on the motion with Alderman Freeman. They asked for $6,000, you made it 12. What was the reason?
No, their actual, their actual claim, including their furniture and everything, is like 12, $27,843.
We're not even claiming the furniture or anything.
And they're not claiming the furniture.
We're claiming the structural stuff.
And I thought that the 18.9 from New Leaf was too high, so I suggested we give them $6,000 on that, plus the 59.84, roughly $6,000 for the cleanup. That's why I said 12.
Well, and, okay, so we're going to vote now, is that okay? All those in favor, approval of the motion?
No.
Signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion is lost, and I'm sorry, but we're not going to pay your claim. Do you want a roll call?
I think for the record...
I'd like a roll call vote.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote then.
Borowitz?
No.
Crawford?
No.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
No.
Radcliffe?
No.
Sanderson?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Two in favor.
Okay, the motion is lost, it's 72. And I'm sorry for your trouble. I commiserate with you. I've been through it and the city didn't pay my claim either, so, I'm the mayor, so. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Alderman Crawford. Seconded by Alderman Sanderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.